And this Committee on Rules, Federal Foreign and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform and Capital District shall come to order. We're convening for, on the appointment of Dr. Shirley Mabini, Ph.D., to be the Director of the Department of Labor and to serve at the pleasure of the Governor, as well as Bill Number 359-33, introduced by Senator Michael Sniklas, an act to provide for a binding referendum during a general election to determine whether or not amendments to Chapter 30 and Chapter 70 of Title XI, GCA, to add a new Article II to Chapter 30 and a new 70134 to Chapter 70 relative to requiring that hotels and similar lodging facilities provide a qualified health benefits plan for all of their employees and their dependents shall be enacted within Guam to be known as the Hotel Worker Health Insurance Act. We'll begin with appointment of Dr. Mabini, and I do have, in addition to a lot of letters of support that I received for the nominee, all in support of the nominee, and will be mentioning those letters publicly, I also have a lot of individuals that signed up to testify for the appointment, and actually, all of them signed up in support of your confirmation hearing. And some are wanting to provide some oral testimony, and some just wants to indicate their support, so I'll begin in the order of those individuals that signed up, but first let me recognize Senators Sniklas, Senator Torres, Senator Morrison, and Vice Speaker Cruz for being here, and thanking them for their participation in this evening's hearing. So let's start with Jamie Mason, sir, please come forward. Michelle Titeno. Greg Massey. Okay, if you have written testimony, you're welcome to summarize that testimony, but certainly, as Chair of this committee, I'll give you as much time as you need to make your presentation, but if you really want to summarize what you need to say, you're welcome to do so. Okay, we'll begin with you, sir, Mr. Mason.
Well, thank you, thank you, Senators. I appreciate the opportunity to come here in support of Sam Mabini. My name is Jamie Mason, I'm Associate Vice President at Pacific Islands University, and I've known her for nearly 20 years. She has worked for me in situations, and I have worked for her, so I've had a chance to really gauge her as an employee, as well as in terms of me being her supervisor. The thing I would put at the top of the list, because I did have a written letter that I submitted, but I thought, well, let's see, would the Senators know about these traits? So I'll quickly go through those. Probably, one of the most important is she's very personable, she has a tendency to, and it's hard to put a finger on it, to walk into a room and she kind of commands attention from people. She's very energetic, sort of like the ever-ready bunny, it's hard to keep up with her, to be honest with you. And she's driven to achieve goals, she is very goal-oriented, and when she puts her mind to something, she doesn't give up, she keeps working on it until it's complete, which is marvelous as a staff member. The other thing is she's very good with people. I've seen her work with people in unhappy customers, what have you, and she has managed to be able to pull them apart from other groups of people, work with them, and end up with a win-win situation, because she's excellent at sharing. She obviously, well, maybe not to you folks, she understands the importance and the meaning of service to the community. She started off with, when I worked with her at GCC, she did a grant, she worked on a grant that put kids, gave them necessary skills through training, and were putting them to work during the summer. So she understands service learning and community service learning, which is extremely important for somebody dealing with labor. Her work ethic is beyond reproach, again, she's diligent, and she sees things through. She loves Guam. We've talked about that before, you know, what ifs, but she sees Guam as being the place she can make a difference. She's also, I've worked with her, she's volunteered for various island projects. And the other thing is, when she was at PIU, and I was there, one day I walked into the office and she had two computers going on, talk about multitasking, she was working on both computers, no idea how she did that, we'll have to have her do a workshop on that. But she tends to facilitate learning when she deals with people, which is extremely important. And so for those various reasons, I wholeheartedly support Sam as being our next Director of Labor.
Thank you, Mr. Mason, I do have your written testimony, in addition to what you said, I would put this into the committee report. So thank you for being here. Ms. Titeno.
Half a day. Honorable Senators, thank you for being here. I am here to testify and support the confirmation of Dr. Shirley Sam Mabini, Ph.D., to be the next Department of Labor Director. I've known Sam for about seven years, she's focused, committed, driven, accomplishes missions and goals, a team player, an effective leader, steadfast, and a community-minded citizen. In the last few years, more collaborative efforts between the Guam Parole Board, the Department of Corrections, the Office of the United States Attorney with Alicia Umptiako, Guam Department of Labor, offices of the Governor and Lieutenant Governor, yourselves as the legislature, the Guam Judiciary, District Court, other GovGuam agencies, Guam Community College, UOG, Guam Trades Academy, our business community, and other nonprofits, have especially engaged in continuing the forward movement to assist those who have been currently or formerly incarcerated or on parole. These collaborative efforts include completion of high school diploma, continuing in post-secondary studies, trades training, college-to-career options, work experience training, apprenticeship, and reentry programs, career counseling, monitoring, job placement, and employment opportunities. As a former Director, Deputy Director of GDOL, Dr. Sam is quite knowledgeable with the aforementioned efforts as she has either developed, assisted, or supported them. Guam desperately needs to continue these support systems. Research shows when those formerly incarcerated receive education, training, employment, and/or become entrepreneurs, they are less likely to recidivate. Guam needs to reduce our 55% recidivism rate. I believe Dr. Sam will continue to support and improve upon these programs. She is also tech-savvy, she totally endorses and utilizes Internet technology and developments, a skill necessary to compete in today's global society. Honorable Senators, our island community needs Dr. Sam. Her gifts, talents, knowledge, skills, and abilities, I humbly and fervently request your support and confirmation of Dr. Sam as GDOL's next Director. Dankunus duus massin, God bless.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I know my colleagues all agree when we say thank you for your service on the Guam Parole Board. We believe that's one of the most difficult boards to serve on, because whatever your decision is, one side is happy, the other side is happy, but your goal has always been that justice served be served in whatever capacity, right?
Yes, sir.
And so, thank you for your participation tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Sina.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm here to give an oral testimony for Dr. Sam Mabini. I know Sam, Dr. Sam, for almost 10 years, being together in the radio show for public service, we, she's also a colleague-
Your voice does sound familiar.
Oh, yeah. We're on our talk show, the Madaming Pinoy, and of course, she's also a colleague in my profession, we're both instructors of the University of Maryland, and I know Sam for being passionate about teaching, training, and development, and we always discuss about how can we develop a certain individual, and you know, we, she's very passionate about her work, and on top, I mean, aside from her educational attainment, she possesses the knowledge of, in terms of, as I mean, as Director, I don't think I can question her integrity of being a public servant, and I don't have any, I don't think I can question her intelligence and her capacity to do the work, so I respectfully endorse and the nomination of Dr. Sam Mabini as the Director of the Department of Labor.
Thank you, Professor, Professor Sina. Okay, so we'll move on to Mr. Massey.
Good evening, Senators, Chairman, Vice Speaker, and Senators. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to testify in behalf of Sam's confirmation. I've, my experience with her is her recent time being at the department, and I find that, and I didn't write up any fancy speeches or anything, I'm just going to talk off my talking points, but I find that her education is especially something that we want to touch on. She has a doctorate in work in human resource education. I'm one of the old schoolers at the department, I've been in here 20-plus years, and we've seen a lot of Directors come and go, very few of them have had the education, though, that is really needed for the position. So Sam does have that, along with a vast public experience in GovGuam and, as others are saying right now in the education field, so that makes her very highly qualified in my eyes, and it's a pleasure working with her, because I can say something once and she gets it, you know, I don't have to go and explain and pull out the rules and the law, and I just have to tell her once and she's got it, and that's something that's really stuck with me, because a lot of the issues at Department of Labor are very complex, especially with the H2 program and immigration type of stuff, and she just, she gets it. The other thing is that she has, I guess, had had the time to kind of transition with our previous Director, Maria Connelly, and actually pick up a lot of the federal program side and actually run with it, and I think is starting to improve upon it. You know, Maria had a bunch of really progressive ways of dealing with the workforce from her experience, and Sam has just taken that to another level, along with tasking us to, you know, really work on the local programs. The gentleman over here made a comment about the Energizer Bunny. My Duracells are wearing down, because she's wearing me down, I mean, she's got us busy, you know, and it's not just, you know, she's thinking outside the box all the time, it's not just stay inside your zone, it's, it's let's get everything done, and really, it is for the people. And the other thing is, and my last comment is, I just want to say that I'm in support of her, because she's continuing that sense of urgency. We've had a lot of Directors that you could just kind of kick back and just do what you do in your lane, she really pushes us with a sense of urgency to get things done. Okay, and if any questions, I'm available, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I'd like to invite any Senator who likes to ask a question or follow. If not, thank you for being here, and you're dismissed. So the next panel is, I have Mr. Dave Sablon, Nita Bodavino, but she signed up just to show support. Norman Analista, just here to show support. And Antonia Mabini, just also signed up to show support. And Senator Tony Lamarena. Jay Merrill is here, okay. Who signed up before Jay Merrill? Jake, Jake Perez, is it? Oh, Jacob Cruz, yeah, okay, Jacob. Yeah. Okay, very nice signature. Okay, we'll start with Mr. Sablon, then we just go down the line.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee. My name is David Sablon, and I'm a resident of Santa Rita. I'm here submitting testimony in support of Dr. Sam Mabini, to be the Director of the Guam Department of Labor. I've known Sam for about six years. When I first met her, she struck me as a very vivacious lady with a lot of energy, as Jamie had just mentioned earlier, and when you look at her resume, you will understand what I mean. She is well-educated, earning her bachelor's degree in international business management from the University of San Francisco, and her master's and doctorate degrees from the University of Minnesota, in the field of work, human resources, family, and community education. Needless to say, this educational background best suits her to be the Director of the Guam Department of Labor, because I am sure she knows how to get the able-bodied of our community to be contributing members to our society, providing them with an educational foundation, whether academic or vocational, to hone their skills in whatever job is of interest to them. The fact that she was the former Director of the Agency for Human Resource Development and a former Deputy Director of the Guam Department of Labor adds further to her experienced qualifications to handle responsibilities of the Office of the Director of the Guam Department of Labor. I have seen Sam at work at the Department of Labor. Currently, she and I are working to help unemployed service members looking for gainful employment. Sam is there leading her team in meetings, showing absolute confidence in knowing and explaining the programs that can help these service members. I am very impressed with her knowledge, commitment, and confidence. I can also see that her staff very much appreciates having a boss who motivates them because of her work ethic and passion for helping others. I am motivated to work harder after our meetings on this project, and I don't even work for her. I have observed Sam give a presentation on the services offered with one of her programs to a room full of employer representatives. She was confident in her presentation, knowledgeable with the details, and answered well the questions from the audience. Suffice it to say, Sir Chairman and Senators, Dr. Sam Mabini is a true public servant and an asset for our government. I have no doubt that she can do the job as the Director of the Guam Department of Labor, and that she will perform very well. In my opinion, as a retired corporate executive for over 25 years of experience in the field of business and management, Sam Mabini has the character traits to be a leader in her desired field of work. Let's take advantage of this opportunity to put her to work, producing results, and getting our people skilled and ready for the challenges in the workplace. I humbly ask for your support and vote of confidence to confirm Dr. Shirley Sam Mabini as our next Director of the Guam Department of Labor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you also, Mr. Sablon, Mr. Merrill.
Mr. Chairman, committee, thank you for the opportunity to address you with probably, in my mind, one of the most important confirmations that you'll be making this year. The future of our economic growth over the next 15 years is going to be based upon our ability to meet the demand of employers that are increasingly finding it difficult to find skilled workers. And while we see our unemployment rate decline, we are also seeing a greater gap between the needs of employers preparing for the military buildup, employers that are trying to fill hotel occupations, and other technical and service-level jobs, because of the fact that our economy frankly is beginning to outgrow our ability to provide labor. At the same time, there is a growing proportion of our community that's dropped out of the workforce, that is now becoming an even greater proportion of those that have decided that although the opportunities exist, they simply are not prepared or unwilling to participate. If we don't solve that particular problem, we not only jeopardize the growth that we may have before us, but we also are losing the opportunity we have to change that, to begin to once again provide this as a community of opportunity, as opposed to a community of hopelessness, and there are too many already, not only here, but surrounding us in Micronesia, that believe that to be the case. So to solve that problem, you need someone that is not only well-trained, not only has the correct heart, but has the ability to see through the complexity of what that requires in terms of shaping solutions that are viable for employers and for governments. I have had the opportunity to work directly with Sam and with Director Connelly. I have seen how former Director Connelly's vision for a regional approach to this problem has taken root, and I've seen how Sam has taken that cause up. I've also seen her able to passionately argue our needs and our case before our federal government, but beyond that, I've seen her have the confidence of key employers and businesses. For me, this is one of the easiest decisions you have to make. Sam Mabini is the right person for the right job today, so I urge you all to strongly consider and approve her confirmation. Thank you.
Thank you also. We'll continue with Mr. Cruz. No, you, go ahead, you're next in line.
in favor of Senator Shirley Sam Mabini, appointed to serve as the Director of the Guam Department of Labor, to go back to the committee and work on reducing the committee's hold, and studying for the next legislative session, to be heard on session floor, and be heard from the third meeting file. Senator, former Senator Sam Mabini, as she is conveniently known, has served in the thirty-first Guam Legislature, along with Vice Speaker, the Honorable Justice Benjamin J.F. Cruz, and many, many others. And she has, after serving in the Guam Legislature, she moved on to higher and much bigger and brighter aspirations. She went out to obtain her doctorate degree, and returned home briefly, and was appointed by then former Governor Felix Comartes to serve as the General Manager of Public Television of GTTF. She also served as the Acting Director of the Department of Labor. She served as the Deputy Director of the Department of Labor, and served with AFRD, the Agencies for Human Resource Development. I believe Sam Mabini will bring to the table a wealth of knowledge, her humble heart, her passion to serve the underserved, and most especially, for building that Comartes Group in her department, will bring brighter and better hints for this island of Guam and her people. Sam Mabini has never left, or has never deviated from the two moral values, or family values, and most especially, she's very approachable. I know truly in my heart that when I am out there in public, I have to go to and say, Sam, there's a problem with something, she'll say, she'll turn around and say, call me, and let's talk about it. She brings to the Department of Labor the spirit of the natural, and the same spirit of by any hand. She truly can move the Department of Labor in that right direction that it's headed towards into the twenty-second century. I humbly urge you to confirm, Senators, I humbly urge you all to confirm the Honorable former Senator and Dr. Shirley Sam Mabini as the next Director of the Guam Department of Labor. Send Dankunus, send sincereness to us, Mashi, baranin, baranin, baranin shalama'oh, and thank you very much.
Thank you also, very much. Okay, we'll recognize Senator Lamarena.
Good evening, Senators, Chairman Respecho, Senator Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Spaldon, Senator Torres, Senator Morrison. My name is Tony Lamarena, the Acting Director for the Department of Corrections. I've known Sam way long before I even knew her name was Shirley. You know, Sam, you know, is a very passionate individual. I first worked with her when she was at the KGTF, and the many programs that she did to pursue more local programming. For years, KGTF did a lot of programming primarily that was canned, where she felt that we should do more and produce more local shows, and so I respect her for that. I've worked with her also as a Senator, when I, at the time, I was the Chairman of then the Civil Military Task Force, and so she was very supportive of the work we were doing and looking to introduce legislation that would help individuals in our community through workforce development programs, and you know, that's her strength, and I think the Department of Labor is the right fit for her. Currently at the Department of Corrections, we work very closely with the Department of Labor. One of my main pushes at the Department of Corrections is to cut down the recidivism, and one of that is to initiate the prison industry. Currently, we're working with the Department of Labor to train instructors. Currently, we have seven instructors of the Department of Corrections that have been certified through the Department of Labor and through the Guam Trades Academy, and soon we'll be training individuals within the prison community. But the whole intent is to provide that additional workforce. When our individuals, when our inmates are released, our clients are released into the community, we want to be able to arm them with skills, certified skills, so that they can go out and be active members of the community, and Sam and I will be working hand-in-hand in developing additional programs, and so we look forward to working with her- And so we look forward to working with her, and I ask for your support in confirming her so that we can continue to improve the situation currently at the Department of Corrections and have our clients leave with a skill that can contribute to the future of the island. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, Senator Lamarena. No questions or comments. Thank you for your participation tonight. I've called everybody that signed up. However, if there's someone who may have signed up and indicated support and not wanting to testify, but if any of you changed your mind, if anyone just showed up recently and didn't get a chance to sign in to participate at the confirmation hearing for Senator Mabini. If not, it'd be my pleasure to welcome up Senator Mabini, who's been nominated to be the Director of the Department of Labor. Okay, the Chair gives you the opportunity to make your opening statements.
Thank you. It's hard to follow that. Dear Honorable Senator and Chairman Respecho, I'm going to be reading the written testimony that I had prepared, and you should all have a copy. Thank you, Tom. First, thank you, the members of the committee and all honorable senators for the opportunity to be here. I have appreciated many of the kind words and encouragement and support in the days leading up to today's hearing, including that of today, and I look forward to working with this committee, the community partners and colleagues, to meet the mission of the Guam Department of Labor. Now, to begin, I'd like to share my vision for the Guam Department of Labor that I am privileged to lead. Now, as many of you know, the Guam Department of Labor's ability to serve the people of Guam require effective oversight and leadership, and this means working with our government branches, our private sector, and numerous partners in the community. I have and will continue to carry out this responsibility. As you know, the department streamlined its current structure that includes labor-related compliance, employment, and training services. I am committed to improving the department and labor conditions on Guam, which entails a number of initiatives of which I will share below. Improving department operations is important as I serve our internal customers, the staff, or the team that make up the department. Weekly meetings with department supervisors I held to discuss important activities, issues, performance outcomes, as well as ideas and collaboration to improve our services. Accountability is an important value I expect from my team, and we regularly discuss and create ways for departments and individuals to recognize their expected performance goals and outcomes. This helps the team to see the value of their work. I encourage ongoing professional development, cross-training, and always find ways for cost-free training opportunities. The fiscal and administrative team are also tasked to work smarter, not harder, utilizing improved accounting and office administrative tools. We have already implemented training for all our staff involved in case management to improve customer service and program delivery. Recently, staff at the American Job Center, or the A J C, have completed their Workforce Development Specialist Training Certification from a nationally recognized program. They are building their professional skills to serve our job seekers, businesses, and community partners. Guam Community College, Department of Vocational Rehab, Department of Public Health and Social Services, they are all partners participating in this training. Now, together, we will work on using one case management system, which is called the HireGuam.com, as we often serve the very same customers, and the goal is to have an effective department with a competent team focused on our mission and improved customer service. Improving customer service through education and outreach is an important agenda, and I direct the departments within G D O L to increase and improve interactions with the community. Now, for my part, I have directed the G D O L supervisors and their team to be responsive to inquiries and letters from members and organizations requiring our assistance, as well as posting current and useful information, like on our website. The intent is to be proactive on important issues rather than reactive to avoidable issues. As such, regular labor clinics are held to include the compliance divisions who are tasked to administer, educate about, and enforce labor-related rules and regs. At the American Job Center, we have established a new business services team to reach out to public and private companies to see how we can better support their employment and training needs, and they are to work with our case managers to help match job seekers to real job opportunities identified by the industry. G D O L has also rebranded, has a newly designed website for the American Job Center, and we are exploring how to implement social media. Building our local workforce is a critical agenda and role of the American Job Center Department of Labor. The A J C team is here to help our people find employment, build skills and people to secure jobs in the market, and to eventually become gainfully employed members in our economy. Programs are also being developed under the guidance of the Guam Workforce Development Board, G W D B. The board is represented by a majority of business representatives, as their feedback is critical to design and implement training activities to prepare our workers. We know that the career pathway must begin early, as in secondary schools, which means working with our G D O E to build more robust career pathway programs. This is why I actually became a senator, to author the College and Career Readiness Act, the CARE Act, Public Law 31156, in the Thirty-First Guam Legislature. I understand G D O E is carrying out the CARE Act initiatives. I believe we also want happy workers, as in having meaningful jobs that one wants to go to and one wants to work hard at. With our partners, we want to have real effective programs that not only help people find jobs but land careers that fit their skills and interests, and if skills are lacking, we have the flexibility to design and deliver programs that can better prepare them to be successful in the workplace and in their lives. Building our workforce in Guam also means taking the regional approach, a regional approach, to address our migrant workers from our sister islands. I actively participated and presented on workforce development initiatives at this year's Micronesian Chiefs and Executive Summit, wherein leaders committed to working together to address the workforce crisis throughout Micronesia. I aim to move from discussions to actions to implement regional programs, such as the extension of the Guam A J C for whether they're on-island or off-island. And with that, the overall goal is to prepare youth and adults to become quality skilled workers as contributing members of the community. Businesses as our partners is needed to support this mission, our mission. They are in demand of quality and skilled workers and require our assistance to help fill the gaps or address some serious deficiencies in the skill level of our workers. Our economy is dependent on their success, and their economic viability is dependent on quality human resources. So our program at G D O L is needed by our business partners. As much as I know, we have incredible people on Guam. For many years that I've been involved in education and training, I unfortunately hear a consistent message: Sam, we need to do a better job at helping our youth, young and seasoned adults, to develop stronger work ethics and skills. This is needed to create the win-win situation for both employee and employer. In response, the A J C now has a team, as I mentioned earlier, of business services representatives who work with case managers and programs to be responsive to businesses. The B S Rs identify employer needs and respond by guiding them to our employment and training programs, or even information from our Bureau of Labor and Statistics, and oftentimes to our compliance divisions in support of wage earners, for instance, fair employment issues, where we can our information, alien labor processing, or workers' compensation. Now, stronger community partnerships continuously happen or in process. We are required to work harder to have real partnerships with our agencies, our school systems, and nonprofits. We hear this all the time. This makes sense, because agencies are required now, many of our agencies are receiving federal grants that are required to demonstrate to the funders performance results, many of which require support services, training services, employment results. So the A J C houses programs focused in serving our youth, our adults, our seniors, our disabled veterans, with partners coming from D V R, Public Health, and G C C, and many others. The American Job Center holds the main role of providing employment and training services, and so organizations are expected to lean on us to help them succeed. For instance, four months ago, as a former senator had mentioned, a partnership was born between the Department of Corrections, the Guam Trades Academy, and the Guam D O L American Job Center. A training unit within the correctional facility was created, and with newly trained D O C clients tasked to train fellow clients who are ready to exit. This helps increase their success as they re-enter into society, either for direct entry into employment or getting onto career pathway training. Now, other examples include closer partnerships with NGOs like WesCare, who serve our veterans and other vulnerable groups. Big Brothers and Big Sister with their mobile center, serving our F A S, our sister island residents in remote parts of Guam, as well as employer support at the Garden Reserve, E S G R, and the list grows. Now, building and maintaining resources is another important responsibility. Federal grants are now being effectively maintained, new ones have been awarded, and we are working on applying for more grants to grow our resources to carry out the mission of the department. The department recently received about $200,000 to support our apprenticeship program, and we are optimistic about additional grant applications to further expand apprenticeship and other programs to support our youth and adults' needed training and employment support. The new Guam Workforce Development Board Combined State Plan pulls in agency partners too to build capacity with their resources sharing that. Three weeks ago, I was in San Francisco, and I met with some federal officials representing various departments: Department of Labor, Department of Health and Human Services, Agriculture, Food and Nutrition, and others. I wanted to discuss with them model partnerships to support employment and training. I helped them recognize how employment and training work lies at the heart of the American Job Center, so as they focus on their mission, they can capitalize on ours to handle the employment and training side. New grant opportunities are now being developed as a result of those conversations, and this requires trust in strong collaborative activities locally and the support from our fine senators like yourselves as we build these partnership initiatives. In all, I believe the Guam Department of Labor must be responsible, flexible, and continually adapting to evolving needs in our community. This is especially important considering the need to have qualified workers to replace foreign laborers. I know we must learn from what has worked or not when it comes to preparing our workforce that fits Guam needs. This means actively engaging job seekers, our wage earners, those who are ready on the job, and community partners. We need to be more effective and creative in serving our people and providing them the support needed to lead productive and gainfully successful lives. The department must be partners in planning for economic growth or challenges, and our businesses are key stakeholders in this process. I believe that with my educational and professional background, I have the right qualities and the right attitude to carry out the task needed to meet the department's mission. I started my career in serving the working youth and adult over 25 years ago, beginning with various professional roles at Guam Community College. I've served with some of you in the Thirty-First Guam Legislature, so it should hopefully be apparent that education and workforce development has always been a main interest. I served on the Guam Workforce Investment Board, and now I am the Interim President of the New Guam Association for Career and Technical Education, covering Guam and the region. I am proud to have received my Master's in Education in Work, Community, and Family Education, as well as my Ph.D. in Work and Human Resource Education from a top research university, the University of Minnesota. It was the leading institution in the area of workforce development research. My focus and passion to help others succeed in the workplace was even reinforced while I was at the university. It was in 1999 that I began studying Congress's newly signed Workforce Investment Act. Seventeen years later, today, I find myself back on Guam, tasked to carry out the updated Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act of 2014. In the pursuit of Guam Department of Labor's main mission, I pledge to this committee my dedication, energy, and professional know-how while in this office to build competence and confidence in our ability to serve the island. Thus, I respectfully ask for your support of my confirmation as Director, so I may be able to continue serving the people of Guam in this capacity. I appreciate your time, and also want to express my sincere appreciation for those who have submitted or expressed their kind support this evening. Sid Usmasi and Maramin Salamat.
Thank you again, Senator Mabini. You know, your testimony really summarizes your short stint as the Acting Director of Labor, and how much more if the legislature, and when the legislature moves to confirm you, so that you can continue to provide the kind of stability and continuity that the employees deserve. You know, I want to make sure that we recognize as well the former Director Maria Connolly, and say what a great opportunity it was for you to serve as Acting Director or Director of H R D.
Yes.
Yeah, and then when the legislature moved to merge both agencies, then you were very willing and gracious to agree, I would say, agreed, because nothing happens unless two parties agree. You graciously accepted the Deputy Director position that the Governor appointed you to, and then you were working very closely with Director Connolly. And Director Connolly has made it very clear since the time Governor Cavill brought her back to Department of Labor that she was not going to be there for very long. And then I guess she recognized all your talents and abilities and involved you in everything that she was doing, so there was really a seamless transition between Director Connolly and now yourself as soon-to-be Director of Labor. So, you know, I have no problems working with you. You've been very open and transparent, and whenever anyone in the community has any questions, you're always able to provide a response. You've been very receptive to working closely with the Director of Corrections, as both Senator Lamarena and yourself pointed out, with the prison industries, and to even look at the possibility of making D O C inmates that are part of the prison industry program that are working outside of the Department of Corrections, that are skilled worker, you have been open to the idea to provide that they be paid a prevailing wage. And so there's legislation that's pending before the legislature to do just that, so that if after you set up all this workforce development skills, and they're going to be skilled as carpenter, for example, there's no reason why on a workforce development program that they're working for a private sector, there's no reason why that person should be paid what a carpenter, a skilled certified carpenter makes. And so we talked about breaking that up to give one there to restitution, one there to legal fees or court fines that they may have, as well as one there to provide for their family. So I have nothing but good things to say about your appointment. I do want to say that you were appointed back in June of, June 13, and the delay is for no reason other than you wanted to just focus on your job as Acting Director of Labor, and so, you know, then we decided together that your appointment's going to expire on September 13. So I'm grateful that my colleagues are here tonight, and we're in the middle of a budget session, and I'm grateful that my colleagues are willing to, at the conclusion of this public hearing, for me to do a committee report, and if I, if and when I gain the support of the committee members, that there's a great hope that your nomination will be on this current session so that we can beat that September 13 deadline. So just let the employees know that that was the only reason why we're here tonight and we're not here back in June. But I do also want to say that you've always been open to an oversight, not an oversight hearing, but a roundtable hearing that we're going to have with the Department of Labor to go over any other ongoing matters that this committee may have with your department. But I want to invite my colleagues to ask any questions of you or join me in the accolades, and just to share thoughts, their thoughts on your appointment to that department. I'll start with the Vice Speaker.
Sam, there she is, my support. I just was wondering, what is the status of the study for minimum wage?
We have been checking with the Attorney General's Office weekly, and as a matter of fact, last Wednesday, we had a face-to-face meeting, and this was put as a priority to move forward, but as of this afternoon, when we followed up, they are still working on that, so I will continue to follow up and keep you abreast. It is still with the Attorney General's Office, sir.
Okay, Senator Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, and I want to thank everyone who provided testimony this evening as well, and also the D O L team that is here this evening behind you. I, first off, appreciated your time that you took with me to talk about some issues that are, that I believe are related to the department. I paid a visit not too long ago to the department and concerns that I had, or trying to see how we could address some of the concerns of our of our people that are looking to apply for, or looking for employment. And one of the, one of the concerns that left, too many concerns, is doing a survey within our office to see if this is a bigger issue than just someone bringing it up to me on the streets was through the application process, getting the clearances, through the court clearances, police clearances. I believe even now, some, in some cases, federal clearances. I know we all had to get one. But I was, I visited Department of Labor to see if there was a possible way that they could lead some discussions. I know you mentioned here in your testimony that you set up a business service team to work with both the private sector to see what other type of support the department can provide regarding employment and training needs. I'm wondering if, looking at, the issue is, how could we help those, especially those that are seeking employment with that cost, with clearances? One of the models that I shared with was, I mean, it has some similar approaches with the Contractors Licensing Board. When contractors are applying for, or taking on bids within our community, they don't need a license until, upon award of that contract, and then they can meet all the local requirements of our government. And I was thinking, how could that similar model apply to applicants upon receiving the job or being noticed, put on notice that they receive the job, that they will have to provide these clearances? And, you know, some of these folks, I mean, if they're lucky on their first hit and putting their applications out, and they're lucky, I guess they won't have to have that extra burden, you know, looking for another job or another opportunity. And I'm just hoping that with Department of Labor, that that discussion can really take place, particularly not only in our private sector, but also our government, to see if we could put in place a process that, you know, maybe there is an opportunity that these clearances can last a certain period so that they can seek employment, and then upon employment, they could actually provide that updated clearance. Have you had any thoughts about this?
Yes, I actually have three approaches that I think that can be addressed, and we've actually worked on a few of them. Number one deals with, you know, many of our agencies and our interest in protecting the people. We create a lot of artificial barriers that just make it more difficult when, when they're really not necessary. They may be redundant. So that's where the business services people come in. And that, your point is well taken. That is something that I want to do, is work with, whether it's our court system or perhaps our police clearance system, and see how we can streamline and reduce the costs and not have a repetitive cost if they come back the next week or the week after. So that's one approach, agency-to-agency discussions to work on ways of alleviating that burden. The other one is deals with, again, with our business services, working maybe with the industry and seeing how they can embrace and accept the fact that sometimes these are redundant. Maybe the industry, maybe within businesses, they may not necessarily need a court clearance at every moment that a person comes in. Maybe they can accept something that's a certain period, so that's a second. The third is, while we're not there, if we're not there yet, within our federal programs, we have support services funding. In fact, just yesterday, I believe I was sitting down with our team. We're rewriting a new support services policy and listing all the support services funding that are available from our partner agencies like Public Health or Guam Community College or GURA, and utilizing those and the monies coming in from our programs at the American Job Center to augment fees like whether it's driver's license training or driver's license fees or clearances or whatnot for our, for the people who are needing our, and who are our clients and who are needing services. So historically, a lot of the support services costs that we cover are childcare, maybe, or maybe materials needed for their particular work environment. But I want to go way beyond, way beyond that and look at what's the real need of an average employee, the cost. I know it's expensive when I, you know, just applying for this position. I mean, I have to do my court clearance and my, and police clearance, and it does get costly. And if a person's not making anything near what we're making, that is a burden, and that's where we come in. So I believe those three, those three approaches would be how I would approach it. And we are actually addressing that as we speak.
Thank you.
And I am going to make a commitment that we are going to take care of that.
Please, I appreciate that. I'd like to see if there's any way, I mean, if it requires this body, I mean, this committee to move forward, so let us know. Again, I've been, again, that's why I paid a visit up there because I wanted to learn more. Maybe there's some other services that are already doing this or helping, but I really feel it's a greater issue than we think. I mean, I see folks that are discouraged to just keep throwing out applications because per application, it's a whole new process to getting these clearances. It's adding up, and the fees have just, the fee schedules have been just recently adjusted with the police department, and I believe even the courts. And it's adding up. So I hope we can have some model in place and some understanding with our private sector that, that, you know, again, that these first clearances could last a hopefully a certain amount of period in goal clearance. So I appreciate your concern. Congratulations on your appointment. You have my full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Morrison. Let me go back to the Vice Speaker for a follow-up comment.
As long as, as long as we're talking about clearances, as the new Director-designate of the Department of Labor, does the Department of Labor, or do you have a personal philosophy on beyond the box?
You're talking about the "banned the box"?
Yes, banned the box.
The banned the box. I believe that's a, that's a current possible legislation. There's been a lot of talks because of the one community initiatives that the DA and various partners in the community have been tackling. The banned the box is not something new. Many states are using it. I know from the perspective of the employee who does not want to be discriminated before they even get through the door, yes, we have to protect that person. They've made an error, they made a mistake or whatnot. I believe, at least the draft that I had seen, that one of the areas that probably raises the concern by private businesses, and maybe because they don't understand it, is when is, when and at what point do they have the prerogative to make a decision? Is it, and what I try to explain to, like, one employer did reach out to me and ask my opinion about that. And I explained to them that that does not mean that it's an absolute open door and, you know, and you have no say. It's a matter of being able to put, I don't want to say blinders, but to give a fair chance for that person to see whether they have the merit to be able to carry out the job. And once the job offer is made, then it's at that point then, you know, that it would be feasible for a businessman to say, "Well, you know, is there something that I should know about your background that I should take into consideration?" I think that's fair. It would be no different anyways. So most employers are nervous about the idea of not having control anymore about being able to make a decision of who they're going to hire. And if, as long as they're educated and understand that they do, that they do have, that they still have that final say. How they go about it is the sensitive issue. I know that as a nation, we have taken a lot more, maybe the word liberal is too strong, but we are leaning towards recognizing that we as a community have to work together to bring, to provide jobs for those who are most vulnerable. If we keep this up, somebody else is going to pay the bill, social services or whatnot. And so banning the box, I think, is a good idea as long as employers recognize and understand that they still have the ability and capability to make a decision that's wise for their businesses. If they're, but without understanding the full parameters, you know, to tell a person, "No, absolutely not." You know, you can't even ask a person that. And I think that's the immediate reaction for most businesses. I don't get to ask that question. Yes, you do. It's a matter of when. It's the same thing as hiring a person, you know, who walks in, who you're expecting a man, and suddenly a woman walks into the door. What, can the woman perform, carry out the skills or, you know, has the merit to carry out the role? And you should not make, you know, and I hope that that person won't be judging my ability based on my gender or my sexuality or my ability, okay? Because we do know that we have many capable individuals. But again, to answer your question, banned the box will work as long as employers understand that they have not lost the ability to be able to protect their business.
Okay, Senator Torres.
I'd like to thank the Vice Speaker for that introduction into a piece of legislation that I have not only in draft form, but there is a stakeholders' meeting on Thursday, which Department of Labor, because they play a very big role in that, that legislation has been invited. I certainly look forward to, first of all, I appreciate your testimony because it provided a lot of insight into areas that I was curious where you stood and how much progress you've made in addressing those issues. But going back to the point that was brought up by the Vice Speaker, I think that in looking at ways to create workforce development, we also have to consider, in our community, that statistically, there are more people with criminal records than there are people with college degrees in the nation and perhaps on Guam as well. And that's, and that, that it, we've come to a point, especially in our community, where so many are on the public assistance roles that we have to look at other creative ways to get these people gainfully employed, especially when they have made restitution on whatever infractions that they may have made, for whatever reason, at some point in their, in their lives. And so I certainly look forward to working with you and your agency and other stakeholders in our community to draft responsible, fair chances legislation. And a little, applies. But the legislation that I'm proposing, finalize and introduce with the input of, also address some of the initiatives that you have, and it'll, I think, poll in terms of giving them an opportunity once they've made restitution. I think that you've been a very good partner, community partner, and a very professional person, and I certainly give you my support. Sid Usmasi.
Thank you, Senator Torres.
How many jobs we have out there being subsidized by the earned income tax credit? And if we could also identify what industry those jobs are in so we can begin trying to explore, get those employees, numbers may be improving, the taxpayer liability. Actually has to do with the bill that we're dealing with tonight. Abilities that are tax. They become, they have like a seven, a six payout ratio. So we'll begin gathering data on the level of health insurance coverage that's being provided to the workforce that we have on the island. I think those two areas are the biggest tax liabilities that still creep into the equation, even though the employment data looks like it's improving. And if we can get a firmer handle on that, that'll help us to at least begin trying to figure out how to craft policy to bring those numbers down, reduce the taxpayer subsidies to these employees who are getting gainfully employed but who are still somehow ending up on the taxpayer burden. So if you could just commit some of your expertise to that, I'd very much appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yes, Senator.
Thank you, Senator.
Dr. Mabini, welcome. I appreciate a lot of the testimony that was given on your behalf today. It made me realize that everything that I thought and have witnessed basically is shared by many other people, and I appreciate that. Not that I'm surprised, but I just appreciate that. You thought your job was full now. In fact, your presentation was one of the better presentations of any nominee who's come before this panel for, who's been nominated to lead an agency, and I was very impressed, and I appreciate that as well. And after hearing all your testimony of what you're doing right now, what you plan to do, and everything else, I was thinking, gosh, that's a full plate. And then you come before us, and then you hear the members up here saying, "Oh, by the way, do this, add this to your list and add that to your list." And so you have a tremendous job ahead of you. But I do believe you're the person to do it. And you have my full support. One of the things that I took great interest in, only because it was some legislation and a law that was passed back in the 29th legislature, was the whole prison industries concept. And it's taken this long. I mean, that was passed in 29th, went to 33rd now for it to even start some, to see some kind of progress. And I'm really looking forward to, you know, some, some, some real results out of that program. I do believe that there are a lot of people in there who have abilities and skills that just haven't been developed. I believe that, again, for the sake, and we know that people make mistakes. They make stupid choices or dumb choices sometimes, but don't have really the opportunity because they've been incarcerated to really go out and try to improve themselves. So while they're there, that would definitely be a big help to themselves and their families and this community as a whole. So I really am going to watch very, hopefully, that you will make, you along with the Director and your staff, their staff, will be able to make some progress in that area as well. But I have full faith in you, Sam, and I congratulate you in advance. I believe that you will get confirmed, and you definitely have my full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. There was also a need to make mention that you are the Director of the Guam Public Library System.
That's correct.
And, of course, I can also point out some of the things that in your employment history, but I bet you must be proud of how the Hagatna Library looks today.
Absolutely.
And it's always encouraging that you can already see your different legacies, right? And so I'm also very hopeful of what's to come for the Department of Labor. And so I'm getting good signals up here. And we have another person who just signed up to show support for you, and that's Aunt Rita Frankwitz. Jerita Franquez. So the list of all these individuals that are supporting you, as well as their written testimony, are going to be part of the committee report, which we're going to try to do, and we'll work with the vice speaker right now, because we're in the committee hall, so as soon as we convene on those proceedings, then I'll work with the entire legislature to see, to see how quickly we can put your nomination on the session agenda. But you're very familiar with the legislative process, and I know you're also confident that we would be able to meet that deadline. But I have no, I have no specific questions other than to say thank you for accepting the appointment, and we'll continue to work together. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Sid Usmasi.
The next item on the agenda is Bill Number 359-33, and I'll give the audience an opportunity to regroup.